Before we start, I just want to give a quick overview of what we're going to do this evening. So, we do have the special meeting to vote out any matter which needs to be voted out by June 30th. So what we'll do first is we'll recognize the Finance Committee, Public Works, then Public Safety. Once you're done with those motions that need to be voted out by the 30th, and then we will vote those out, and then anyone that needs to have a committee meeting afterwards can do that. But again, we won't be meeting again until the 15th. So, any questions on the rundown for tonight? Perfect. All right, Mr. Kovas, all you.
Thank you. The public finance created order at 7:00 P.M. It is myself, Council of Reynolds, Council of Tauras. From the docket of July 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $500 from account 11411000-532015. Assessor Staff Development to account 11411000-558110. Assessor subscriptions.
Second.
This is $500. There was an unexpected increase in the subscription costs, so let's just cover that. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And from the docket of July 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to appropriate $235,000 from account 1000-359000. Undesignated fund balance free cash, general government to fund 3428 APS parking. Motion's in order. So, this item is to transfer $235,000 over to this Attleboro Public Schools parking account. And if you remember back in 2022, we appropriated $415,000 into that account for resurfacing the parking lots for Thatcher, Hyman Fine, and Studley. Back then, the estimated cost for resurfacing those parking lots was $415,000. That work hasn't been done yet, and it's, and the cost has since increased. And we want to get that work done this summer before the schools open up. And in order to get that work done, we need an additional $235,000 to pave those parking lots. And that includes a 15% contingency. If we don't approve this $235,000, the only parking lot that we'll be, that we'll be able to do is the Thatcher parking lot. And my suggestion is that we approve this because if we do all three of them at once, there's, it's cheaper for the city to be able to do three of them at once because we just hire the pavers to do it all at once, and there's an economy of scale and all of that. So it's cheaper to do three at once for the city. Does that make sense? President Delicia.
So, we, what was the date that we appropriated the initial?
2022. It is a Capital, it's a Capital Projects account, so that sort of rolls over.
Totally understand, but why, what was the delay?
I, I don't under, I don't necessarily know why it didn't happen back in 2022, that summer. I, I didn't follow up on that.
Okay. No, it's all right. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I know it's, but it just seems to me like, you know, four years, now we're looking at 235,000.
That's fair.
235,000, so, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And... Next item we hold, this is a public hearing. And then from the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to amend Section 6-4.3 of the revised ordinances as follows. Strike Section 6.4.3 in its entirety and replace it with effective July 1, 2025. The following ambulance service charges shall apply. BLS emergency rate, $1,770.78. ALS-1 emergency rate, $2,536.88. ALS-2 emergency rate, $2,492.35. Special Care Transport, SCT, $4,175.46. BLS non-emergency base, $1,765.42. ALS-1 non-emergency base rate, $2,492.35. Mileage, loaded mile, $36.60. Beginning on January 1, 2027, and each January 1 thereafter, all such ambulance service charges shall be automatically increased on January 1 of each year by a percentage equal to the percentage increase of the most recent ambulance fee schedule approved by Medicare for Attleboro. If there is no increase in such period, the city's ambulance service charge shall remain unchanged. The fire department shall maintain a list of current charges as updated. The fire chief may waive or authorize a reduction in fees for individuals transported that do not have health insurance, and a financial hardship is demonstrated or other extenuating circumstances. A notice of any waivers or reductions in fees will be sent to the office of the city auditor. The city solicitor has reviewed and approved these proposed changes as to form.
Second.
Motion is in order. So, I think this is, this is great. And so aside from the fees, which are increased, the piece that I think is incredibly important here is that we are aligning this to an increase year over year that isn't tied to politically charged things. And so each year, this will increase based on the Medicare index. And we won't have to vote on it, and it won't be sort of politically charged. And we won't have to vote on it and say, oh, well, if we vote on it, are we going to get elected again? This, this way, the city can collect what it costs to deliver these services, and it'll automatically increase, and the ambulance fees can be collected. And so I think we need to do more of this. I know Vice President Dolan has talked about this with water and sewer connections, and we need to review these on a regular basis so that the city isn't losing money on, on those connections and whatnot. We just recently did that rate study. So I, I think this is a step in the right direction. I know we talked about this in our budget message. So I think this is positive. Any other comments here? Counselor Fowa, and then Counselor Sawyer.
My only comment is to note in the last paragraph, you provide that the fire chief can waive or reduce the fees for someone who does not have health insurance, and a financial hardship is demonstrated. I would propose that that be "and/or," because you could have health insurance that does not adequately or completely cover the ambulance charge, and it could still be a financial hardship for you. So that's my only, otherwise, I agree with you. I think it's a positive step.
Okay. Counselor Sawyer?
I wanted to make a comment about, here it says it's approved by Medicare for Attleboro. I'm wondering if that's what Medicare is willing to pay for, so that's kind of like what the insurance would be willing to pay for. Of course, less deductibles and copays or whatever, but I just wanted to kind of bring that out as to what that was charged, what it's for.
And there's a, Medicare will pay, it's roughly, it's 80% of these numbers is what Medicare will pay. Any other comments?
So I just think, I like Counsel Fowa's point, and I don't know if maybe it should have been worded "and/or" type thing, but it concerns me to change it without talking to the chief. You know what I mean? I don't want, I feel like if we were to make an amendment on that without discussing it with him.
Without talking to the solicitor. I would be hesitant to make an amendment here without talking to the city solicitor at this point.
And/or the chief, yeah.
Correct. President Delicia.
Yeah, I would support that. I think, let's see, the public hearing was on May 20th. This has been in the documents since April 15th. It has to get voted today in order for it to take offense by, exactly. But I just think that a change like that might seem simple enough, but it could change the trajectory of what it is we're trying to achieve here. And I agree with Vice President Dolan, without having the conversation with the solicitor who read this, the chief who read it, I wouldn't support that.
I, President Delicia? I agree with that. I, I think that is something that six months from now, we, we can make that change in the revised ordinances. Like, I, I think the important thing is to approve this now and today, and move forward and, and potentially make that change down the road. I, I do think it is a, a good change to potentially make. And I would support that amendment, but I, I'd prefer not to make it today where we're up, we're up against this deadline. Counsel Fowa, does that, does that make sense?
I understand the rationale.
Yes. Counsel LaVoy.
Thank you, Chair Kovas. I think it's a good idea, but I don't think it's worth holding it up for, obviously, especially given the time crunch. But if I remember correctly, in the capital improvements tour, the bigger issue was mass health not covering their fair share compared to private insurance companies. And I would imagine that if there was an issue with health insurance companies not fully covering it, then it would probably be in here. So, I would be comfortable moving it out tonight, and then if we need to amend it, if the chief sees fit, then we can do that down the road. But definitely moving it out tonight would be the right move.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Outstanding. And then the last one. From the docket of April 1, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the city's capital improvement program fiscal year 2026 through 2030, and approve the message from the Finance Committee, which reads as follows. Resolution of the Attleboro Municipal Council Capital Improvement Program fiscal years 2026 through 2030. Whereas, and everyone should have a copy of this here. Whereas, the Unruly Charter approved by the people of Attleboro in November 1973 mandates the submission of a five-year capital improvement program at least six months prior to the final day of each fiscal year. And whereas, the charter requires a yearly adoption by resolution of the council of at least a five-year capital improvement program for the city. And whereas, the charter necessitated a public hearing, which the council held on May 6, 2025. And whereas, the city's fiscal management team has funded the capital improvement line item in the budget without the use of free cash, demonstrating commendable fiscal discipline. And whereas, the council recognizes the importance of proactive, long-term planning to prepare for significant capital projects that will move the city forward, and emphasizes the need to avoid short-term maintenance Band-Aids. And whereas, a clear, long-term strategy is important for prioritizing substantial capital investments, such as a new public safety facility in a council on aging building over more near-term projects. Whereas, the council further recognizes the need for a long-term sustainability plan for the Capren Park Zoo to inform its future capital requirements, given the financially unsustainable current situation and the need to explore new revenue models. And whereas, the council commends the administration for its renewed discipline and structured approach toward municipal planning in the capital improvement program, which once again serves as a strategic tool for project prioritization, rather than a mere half-hearted wish list. And whereas, the council makes the following suggestions and recommendations in adopting the capital improvement program from 2026 through 2030 totaling $1.76 million, reflecting the city's dedication to improving its infrastructure and services amidst financial constraints, and underscoring the continued, continuous need to address critical needs for community safety, efficiency, and well-being, specifically the Balfour Riverwalk Pedestrian Bridge for $80,000, downtown flood mitigation for $500,000, Pita Zav Bridge for $1.8 million, bonded over 10 years, Koelo Roof Project for $4.5 million, bonded over 10 years, Koelo Envelope Study, $25,000. In the IHCD's Rec Department ADA Recommendations, for $750,000, with half of that being spent next year for $375,000, for a total of $1.76 million next year. Furthermore, the council recognizes that responsible capital planning must go hand-in-hand with diligent stewardship of the city's existing infrastructure. To that end, we encourage the administration to ensure our current municipal buildings are properly maintained, and that sufficient resources are allocated to support the facilities management function. And furthermore, the council urges the administration to develop and communicate long-term plans for the Council on Aging, the Public Safety Complex, and the Capren Park Zoo. Without these comprehensive plans, the effective prioritization of capital improvement projects throughout the year will be significantly hindered. And now, therefore be it resolved, the council hereby adopts the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 through 2030, committing to strategic investments in our city's infrastructure and careful financial planning to support our community's growth and resilience. Motion is in order. So I rewatched the meeting we held, and I think I covered everything. The big item I wanted to make sure we covered in this message is that without a long-term plan for the Council on Aging, the Public Safety Complex, and the Capren Park Zoo, it's near impossible for us to, to really do capital improvement planning. And so the, the thing that we need to encourage the administration to do is to do everything in their power to sort of communicate what the, to figure out what that long-term plan is as quickly as possible, and then communicate that to us. Because it's incredibly difficult to make decisions on, hey, should we replace the roof on the Council on Aging, or replace, or invest money on, in, in the zoo to, there's the, the building, the entrance to the zoo, which was, I intentionally did not include on this. When, I know Counsel LaVoy, we had talked about, there's that wall on, on that building. I intentionally did not include that here because I don't think we know what we want to do with the zoo. And so, until we have that long-term strategy, it's really difficult for us to, to do that capital improvement planning. So I, I think the thing I heard more than anything when we had that discussion was, we need that long-term plan from the administration, and that's, that's what I tried to communicate here. But the other thing I heard is, we need to continue to maintain our buildings as well. And, and so that's what that, that furthermore, where we support the facilities management function within the city is also important. So, I think I covered everything I heard. If I didn't, please let me know. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I move to adjourn at 7:19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. Reporting for the Public Works Committee, I'd like to call for adjourn, excuse me, call to order at 7:00. I turned my phone off.
7:19.
7:19. I have four items tonight. From the docket of July 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to add a multiway stop sign at Mulberry Street and Heasel Street per Section 10-4.12. Other revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Um, in this area, Martin Street, Orange Street, Mulberry, Hazel, most everything's a four-way stop sign. There was an accident there recently, and, um, the schools there, and people struggle to, you know, get out, and shrubbery, and so on and so forth. So I did talk to the police chief before I entered this new business, and he, uh, approved it. He was fine with adding a stop sign. Does anybody have any questions? Excuse me. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve the transfer of four hundred and forty dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to Account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-five-seven-eight-zero-two-zero. Public Works Previous Year's Bills.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, this was, um, for a police detail. I guess this invoice must have been missed. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from account six-one-zero-zero-three-five-nine-zero-zero-zero. Want to enterprise fund retained earnings to account six-one-zero-zero-five-one-seven-one-two-zero. Want to enterprise fund, health insurance, HMO.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, there wasn't enough funding in this account to cover the health insurance, so we, we needed to, we need to take out fifteen thousand dollars more. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I entertain a motion to approve expending of such funds in any future grant amendments regarding the anticipated award of a grant for the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. The City of Attleboro's Capren Park Zoo has potential receive up to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in state funds to be used to reimburse funds expended this year to help support the day-to-day operations and visitor experience at Capren Parksdale.
Second.
Thank you. So this is kind of different. So this is, um, it's like a reimbursement grant, and it, it has to be expended by June thirtieth, which sounds weird, because it's like five days away. But it's for reimbursement of funds already spent, so they just need to submit, um, you know, invoices and such to get the reimbursement. Does anybody have any questions?
Does, do the invoices have to be submitted by June thirtieth? I believe that was a problem that we saw
Oh, let's see.
Earlier.
It says that the contract states that all funding should be spent or committed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This grant is similar to the grant the zoo, the zoo received in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The main difference is these funds will be a reimbursement for the funds already expended by the zoo. Um, I don't know the answer to that.
I think it would be approved. It's submitted at all.
Um, I believe, but I, I believe that last one that you're talking about wasn't, it wasn't, it was because the invoice, it wasn't because we didn't submit them on time, it was because of the date of the invoice.
Right. I believe that's correct.
Right. So I think that's probably lesson learned.
Okay.
I mean, I assume that whatever invoices that they submit will be
All dated June thirtieth or earlier.
I would, I would assume so. I can only assume that. Again, that last one wasn't the parks error. It was just the way it was dated on the invoice. It wasn't the day that it was done, but they wouldn't accept that answer.
Right.
And one has nothing to do with the other. Excuse me, sorry.
Right. So I can only assume that it will be done properly, and I assume if we, if it's not, we will be made aware of that. But again, this is reimbursement as well, so it's money already spent.
I understand that. I just want to make sure.
I'm just clarifying that.
Thank you, yes.
This is a reimbursement grant. President Delicio.
Thank you. So it's important to note here that we have a department head who's going to be overseeing this grant. Have to trust in the department head. Also have Deb Gould, who looks at over everything and makes sure that we're in line with everything. Like, that's their role. It's not our role to tell departments and department heads, we have to do this, that, and the other thing. The other thing I think it's important to point out with this is it has the potential to receive up to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Might not get all of it, might, just hope so, but that's it.
Anybody else have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That's all the business I have tonight. I'd like to call for adjournment at seven twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Council Holmes.
Thank you. Um, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move to transfer two thousand seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to Account Fire, Fire Year Bills.
Second.
Thank you. So this is, um, for police detail, um, a bit requesting. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Diana, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep. You had two, um, positive votes.
Okay. Um, motion passes. One for, um, motion from the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move to transfer five thousand six hundred, oh, sorry, five thousand sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to the following. Two thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents to account Citywide Police Details, and two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to account Citywide Fire Details.
Second.
Thank you. Someone to the last motion, this, um, was also for police details and needed to be, um, needed to be spent. One, sorry, one second. I just wanted to see something. Yeah. Um, yes. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, that's all the business this evening for Public Safety and Emergency Management, and I will call for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at seven twenty-seven. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Municipal Council to order at seven twenty-eight. Uh, would you please rise and join me for a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, can we start with a roll call attendance where Council Holmes is, um, joining us remote this evening?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobus.
Present.
Ms. Foa?
Here.
Mr. Lavoy?
Present.
Ms. Reynolds?
Here.
Vice President Dolan?
Here.
Ms. Holmes?
Present.
Mr. Angelo?
Present.
Ms. Sawyer?
Here.
Mr. Waterman?
Present.
Mr. Tavares?
Here.
President Delicio?
Here.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, all present.
Thank you. Would you now please read a, these, um, notice of the special meeting, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
June third, twenty twenty-five, men, to the members of the Municipal Council, from James J. Delicio, Council President. Counselors, by authority of Article Two, Section Two-Dash-Seven-C of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter, I hereby call a special meeting of the Municipal Council as follows. Date, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, time to be at seven PM. Places, Council Chambers, City Hall, Seventy-seventh Park Street. The purpose is to address any outstanding budget fiscal year twenty-six votes and the end of fiscal year issues, as well as any items in front of the council. Sincerely, James J. Delicio, President.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, actually, we have to do a roll call vote. Uh, so this will be a roll call vote. Uh, we're seconded before we do that. The reason I want to suspend the rules this evening, the only pieces of business we're going to address tonight will be, uh, the may's communication, the clerk's communication, and the several motions that need to get in by the end of the fiscal year. There will not be public hearings, committee of the whole, old business, or new business. So now we can do the roll call vote.
Thank you. Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Director of Budget and Administration, Mason Lord, regarding fifty-third week salary funding for four general fund departments. This morning, after a final review of the fiscal year twenty-five department's salary accounts was completed, it came to our attention that four general fund departments, fifty-third thousand dollars to the Municipal Council Salary and Wages Full-Time Account, three thousand dollars to the clerk's Salary and Wages Full-Time Account, four thousand dollars to the se, Animal Control Salary and Wages Full-Time Account, one thousand dollars to the Veterans Benefits Salary and Wages Full-Time Account. In accordance with Article Two, Section Two-Dash-Nine-B of the City Charter of the City of Attleboro, I hereby respectfully request your honorable body to consider this as an emergency measure in order to meet final fiscal year twenty-five payroll obligations.
That'll go to the Finance Committee, please. And we will now go on to a reading of the clerk's communication, please.
Clerk's Communication, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. We have received a keeping a stand in a public place license application from the Attleboro Garden Club to be held at twenty-five South Main Street on Saturday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, nine AM to twelve PM.
Uh, that'll go to the License, um, Committee, please. And Mr. Lavoy, would you like to call for a public hearing on July fifteenth? I would. Thank you. Motion is in order. This will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We have received an Attleboro Building Permit Fee Waiver Application from Union Theater Plaza LLC and Illuminate Creative and Theatrical Arts Company, Sixty-eight Union Street.
Finance Committee, please. And Mr. Cobus, would you like to call for a public hearing on July fifteenth?
Yes, please. Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. This will be a roll call vote. I begin with Mr. Tavares, I believe.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We have received the following letter of support from Mayor De Simone, and it, and attached is a letter addressed to Mayor De Simone from Attorney John J. Jacoby the Third.
That'll go to the Finance Committee as well.
I need to read it into the record.
I'm sorry?
I have to read that
Oh.
Letter into the record. June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, to the Attleboro Municipal Council, regarding a letter of support for building permit fee waiver application pursuant to the requirements set forth in the Attleboro Municipal Council Policy for Waiving Building Department Permit Fees, I hereby submit this letter of support for the building permit fee waiver application submitted by Union Theater Plaza LLC. More specifically, I support the efforts of Illuminate Creative and Theatrical Arts Company, a nonprofit organization currently leasing the Union Theater and actively engaged in its restoration and revival. Appreciating that permit fees are an important source of city revenue, and that each waiver request must be evaluated by the particular circumstances of the associated project, I submit this letter of support because I am confident that the succe, successful restoration and revival of the Union Theater will improve the overall quality of life of Attleboro residents, advance objectives contained in the comprehensive plan, and our revitalize, revitalization efforts, provide economic benefits to the city, reduce blight, and have civic, cultural, and historical benefits. Respectfully, Kathleen De Simone.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please.
That concludes communications for this evening.
Thank you. We will now go into committee reports, and beginning as always with, um, Mr. Cobus. We'll begin with the emergency, uh, measure, please.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee. From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move to adopt the following as an emergency measure regarding the fifty-third week salary funding for four general fund departments. After a final review of fiscal year twenty-five department salary accounts was completed, it came to our attention that four general fund departments who failed to submit fifty-third week funding requests your honorable body transfer nine thousand dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to the following accounts: one thousand dollars to account Municipal Council Salary and Wages Full-Time, three thousand dollars to account Clerk Salary and Wages Full-Time, four thousand dollars to account Animal Control Salary and Wages Full-Time, and a thousand dollars to account Veterans Benefits Salary and Wages Full-Time. Second.
Motion's in order.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, this is for the emergency measure, and then, and then we'll actually vote on it after.
To accept this as an emergency measure, yeah, just want to make sure we're clear on that. Um, questions, comments, concerns? One thing I'll say is, um, you know, things happen. I, I think the language here were, you know, four general fund departments who failed to submit. I think it's the first time a lot of these departments are handling the fifty-third week themselves, so, um, things happen, and that's why we have the mechanism we have in place here.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, uh, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And from the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move as an emergency measure to transfer nine thousand dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to the following accounts: one thousand dollars to account one-one, one-one.
You can wait the reading of the accounts. You literally read them thirty-five seconds ago.
Thank you. Uh, one thousand dollars to account Municipal Council Salary and Wages Full-Time, three thousand dollars to account Clerk Salary and Wages Full-Time, four thousand dollars to account Animal Control Salary and Wages Full-Time, and a thousand dollars to account Veterans Benefits Salary and Wages Full-Time. Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
This, uh, fifty-third week.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move to transfer five hundred dollars from account Assessor Self Staff Development to account Assessor Subscriptions. Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
This is an unexpected increase in the subscription cost.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, I move to appropriate two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from account Undesigned Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to fund three-four-two-eight Attleboro Public Schools Parking. Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
This is to cover the resurfacing for Thatcher-Hymen Fine and Studley with a fifteen percent contingency.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?[1755.12] Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
I know she was having some connection issues.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got her. Thank you. Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And from the docket of April 1, 2025, I move to approve the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2026 through 2030, and approve the message from the Finance Committee that was just read.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments? Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That concludes business for the Finance Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Cobus. Nice work with capital improvements and the budget. Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. Reporting for Public Works Committee from the docket of July 15, 2025, I move to add a multiway stop sign at Mulberry Street and Hazel Street per Section 10-4.12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
We just discussed 10 minutes ago.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of July 15, 2025, I move to approve the transfer of $440 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer into account Public Works previous year's bills.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
No comments. We just discussed.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of July 15, 2025, I move to appropriate $15,000 from account Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to account Water Enterprise Fund Health Insurance HMO.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From move to approve expending of such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the anticipated award of a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. The City of Attleboro's Capron Park Zoo has the potential to receive up to $112,000 in state funds to be used to reimburse funds expended this year to help support the day-to-day operations and visitor experience at Capron Park Zoo.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
No comments. We just discussed.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And that's all the business for the Public Works Committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. We will recognize Counselor Holmes.
Thank you. Reporting for Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, from adopted July 15, 2025, I move to transfer $2,073.69 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Fire Prior Year Bills.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
I'm sorry. I do have one comment. This, this, the second motion actually has to do with the detail of this first motion. It has to do with front and rear brakes and an oil change on a Ford Explorer and front struts on also a Ford Explorer. So there were some repairs to the fire department to a vehicle there.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And that concludes business for the Public Works Committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. We will recognize Counselor Holmes.
Thank you. Reporting for Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, from adopted July 15, 2025, I move to transfer $2,073.69 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Fire Prior Year Bills.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
I'm sorry. I do have one comment. This, this, the second motion actually has to do with the detail of this first motion. It has to do with front and rear brakes and an oil change on a Ford Explorer and front struts on also a Ford Explorer. So there were some repairs to the fire department to a vehicle there.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That concludes business for Public Safety Emergency Management. I'll call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counselor Holmes. Before we adjourn, just want to remind everyone that after we close this meeting, if you still have committee business that you'd like to bring out, that can't wait until the 15th of July. You can do that, of course. The next meeting will be July 15, and we will be on our summer schedule. It'll be the 15th and 17th in July. Thank you all. It's been a lot over the first six months of the calendar year, so just wanted to thank you all for your flexibility, whether it was CIP meetings, the CIP site visits, the budget hearings. It's been a lot, but you all did a nice job, so I appreciate that. That being said, there is no old business, no new business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Oh, hold on. We've got to do a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah. It's not Mr. Cobus?
Something's just become muscle memory.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Levoi?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes, and we adjourned at 7:48.
The reason why I wanted to have this committee meeting tonight as opposed to waiting a few weeks is I want to bring up a couple pieces of business. We don't necessarily have to vote them out. We can see how things go, but I want to make sure that after our discussions, if there's some takeaways, that that's something we can be working on over the next several weeks. So that's just sort of high level, my thoughts there. So, that being said, from the docket of May 20, 2025, I entertain a motion to amend the times within Section 17-10.15, Item F.6, as follows. Marijuana retail sales or medical marijuana patient sales may not occur within the hours of 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., and may be further restricted as a condition of approval of the special permit issued by the special permit granting authority.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Okay. So two main thoughts that I had in terms of discussion for this. So one is the merit of this proposed ordinance change, and then the second is the process. So in terms of the merit of it, a couple things I wanted to talk about. One is public safety, right? That's probably in the minds of a lot of counselors at the public hearing. I asked questions around that. I believe other counselors did as well. And so I had conversations with the police chief about this. He's agnostic, I think would be the right term, and actually, that is the term that I used with him. I said, would that be a fair assessment? He did say yes, so, towards this proposed ordinance. But he doesn't have any immediate concerns changing the hours to allow marijuana retail
Seven AM. He doesn't have any particular public safety concerns at this time, but it suggests that potentially we explore a mechanism to claw back these hours should any public safety or other potential issues arise. Second point under this, I think, is competition. And this was one of the points that was raised at the public hearing in terms of rationale for changing the hours. There's probably more for me, but like it or not, recreational marijuana retailers run legitimate and legal business establishments in the eyes of the state, and we decided that as voters in 2016. So while I and maybe other counselors have, you know, personal opinions about perhaps the value of these establishments, what they bring to the community, I think it's important to view this objectively and look at these establishments as any other retailers or similarly situated legal businesses. So again, that's probably more me speaking to myself, so I'm doing that out loud here. But in that regard, before us is a proposed ordinance to allow for the extended hours of operation. So we heard testimony from the marijuana retail community making the case that this will allow them to better compete with establishments in neighboring communities here in the Commonwealth and also in Rhode Island. So I think that that's a reasonable rationale for amending the ordinance. And that leads me to my second point, for which I've sought some guidance from the city solicitor, and that's the process. So for the sake of argument, assuming that the council moves forward with an amendment to extend the hours allowed for these retailers with the help of the solicitor, I attempted to come up with some sort of mechanism via the ordinance that either allows us, the council, the ability to claw back the hours or to allow for periodic reviews of these hours. But every potential solution led me back to the same conclusion, that trying to implement something like that just ends up making a simple amendment more complex than I think it needs to be by requiring us to create some sort of additional procedure that the council would be charged with adhering to or something along those lines. So if this is an ordinance that the council isn't inclined to amend now, I think the simplest and cleanest way to address any future issues that would require us to revisit the underlying policy of the restricted hours here under the ordinance, should they arise, is by amending the ordinance in a future iteration. I think that's probably the simplest way to handle this. And like I said, I've thought about this all sorts of different ways, but I don't want to make something simple complex. So that, those are my thoughts. Any questions, comments? Counselor Angel?
You're counsel. I definitely support this. We need to give the businesses in the city the tools to succeed, and I am certainly okay with reviewing this at a later date to make sure it works fine, and I'll support this going forward.
Counselor Dolan?
Thank you. I agree with everything you said. I don't think we need to overcomplicate it, and you know that you spoke to the chief, and he would obviously be honest with you if he had any issues with this. So I will support this when it comes to the full council.
Counselor Lavoie?
Thank you. I supported. The only thing I would have liked to see in there or potentially in the future would be just they would have security on the premise that we can do. So I just worry for those businesses in that area, should it extend if the problem gets worse. And being that they weren't opposed to it, I wouldn't mind seeing it in there, but if it's gonna hold it up, then you can move on however you wish. But I do support it.
Any other comments? If members of my committee have any thoughts, I'd be interested in hearing that. I'm happy to revisit Counselor Lavoie's suggestion, but at the same time, I don't want to unduly lengthen this process either. Obviously, this is probably something we won't address as a full council for several weeks, so I think if there's things that we do want to look into, I'll take this opportunity from, you know, any comments and suggestions to take that time and look at these things so that we can move forward with some sort of defined path in the next several weeks. Counselor Kovaas?
And one of the things I just like to say that this was something that I introduced on behalf of the retailer that had submitted, they had reached out and I had asked them to submit a letter, and so I admitted the new business on their behalf. But it's not something I feel strongly one way or the other, aside from in order to be business friendly, in order to be competitive. If we are not hearing strongly from residents or from neighbors that are strongly against this, then if it helps out the business, then I'm supportive of it. That's how I generally feel.
Any additional comments, concerns, questions? Counselor Kovaas, would you be willing to withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you. And then, next and last piece of business. From the docket of February 4, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the following amendment change to amend Chapter 7, Section 3.5 by banning the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides and to include as follows, Section 7-3. I move to amend the proposed ordinance change as follows, Section 7-3, Rodent and Vermin Control, 7-3.1, Definitions, the following terms as used in this section shall have the following meanings. Rodenticides means a subclass of pesticides defined under the Massachusetts Pesticide Control Act, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 132B, as substances or mixtures of substances intended to prevent, destroy, repel, or mitigate rodents that are declared to be pests by the Massachusetts Pesticide Board. B, second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, or ESKRs, means rodenticides developed to control rodents that are resistant to first-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, and that contain compounds which interfere with blood clotting, causing death from excessive bleeding, while also remaining in animal tissues for an extended period of time. These products currently include, but are not limited to, those containing Bratafacom, Bromidolene, Defini, oh my goodness, I should have practiced these before, Definacomb or Defeti alone. Okay. 7-3.2, Infestation Prohibited, no owner or occupant of any premises in the City of Attleboro shall allow said premises to become infested with rodents or vermin. 7-3.3, Inspection and Remediation, it shall be the duty of the health officer to cause an inspection of any premises in the city while, whenever there's reasonable cause to believe the premises are not in rodent-proof condition. If said premises are found to be infested with vermin or rodents, the owner or occupant shall be notified in writing by the health officer or their duly authorized representative to take immediate measures to remedy the condition. The notice may be served by an employee of the health department or a police officer or by depositing said notice enclosed in a postpaid envelope addressed to the person to be notified in the post office of the City of Attleboro. The owner or occupant shall promptly comply with the notice. 7-3.4, Feeding of Animals, no person shall place food in the open for the feeding of any domesticated fowl, birds, or animals except in containers that prevent the scattering of food upon the ground. After such feeding, any remaining food shall not be left where it is accessible to rodents. 7-3.5, Use of Second-Generation Anticoagulant Rodenticides, the use of ESKRs on city-owned properties is hereby prohibited as of the effective date of this ordinance. This ordinance applies to all city-owned property, including buildings, grounds, parks, open spaces, and the public right of way, and shall be observed by all employees of the City of Attleboro as well as any third-party vendors or contractors providing services on city-owned property. Emergency waivers for ESKR use may be issued by the health department upon a written determination that, one, a significant rodent infestation exists that poses a demonstrated risk to the public health; two, all reasonable, less-toxic integrated pest management methods have been exhausted; and three, the waivers narrowly tailored in both scope and duration. 7-3.6, Fines, any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine according to the following schedule. First offense, $25. Second through seventh offenses shall increase by $25 per offense. These penalties shall be assessed in accordance with the provisions for noncriminal disposition of ordinance violations pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 21D as amended. This ordinance may be enforced by the health department, building department, or police department.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so, little context here. The amendment that I wrote up here in substance is relatively similar to the ordinance that's in place now. I did move around some provisions, tightened up some language, but essentially what I've added for purposes of contemplating this ordinance change is a definition section, which is important for this particular piece of business, as well as Section 7-3.5, which actually talks about ESKRs. The other sections already exist under the ordinance, and so I've simply renumbered them so that everything is consistent throughout with these changes. That being said, I don't think that this is an ordinance change that I will support at this time, not because I don't agree with the policy effort underlying this, because I do think we should move in the direction of not using these ESKRs as a city, but I think that will take time, and my opinion is that we should engage the administration in that work, and I would be open to preparing a resolution on behalf of the council to that effect, and working with the administration to begin moving away from the use of ESKRs through the contractors that the city hires for pest control throughout the city, whether really on any city property. So again, I'm in support of the underlying policy. I just think that it's not time to make this change now, especially whereas I think the state is considering similar changes. It could be that at some point, these are banned anyway, and at that point, I think it's important to know that we've got effective ways to manage pest control that we've tested beforehand. So I think using time to collaborate with the administration on that and with the contractors that we hire as a city is important. I'm not saying this isn't something that I would ultimately support. At some point, I think it's just premature. But that being said, I've drafted and prepared the language that I think would be necessary to move forward with this. I know it's been stated before, but other cities and towns have moved in this direction to ban ESKRs and have made ordinance changes accordingly, so there's definitely a movement in that direction. My concern, again, which I mentioned the first time that we discussed this, is that we're tying our hands as a city without giving time to test alternatives and really find an alternative solution. Not that there aren't alternatives out there, I think we just need to start using them as a city, I think, before we start making decisions like, I think, banning ESKRs at the city level. Counselor Angel?
Thank you, Counselors. I will support it, but I want to see that we take this one step further and we ban the glue traps as well, and then I'll be okay with it. Other than that, I think we have...
Excuse me, we ban what?
Blue traps.
Blue traps.
Blue traps, yeah. The pest control places are, I mean, he did mention it's taken a tool out of his kit, and it'll be a little bit more expensive, but he will be able to, they do have it, they do have, you know, known ways, and there's other cities, I think Counsel Lavoie sent a notice of other cities that have done it, and it's been successful already too as well. But I would like to see glue traps added to this as well, because I think that's a really inhumane thing for, you know, some of the rodents as well, too.
So my initial thought on this, I could be wrong, but I think that enlarges the scope of the proposed ordinance change here, so I don't know if that would require another public hearing, if that's something that we were to consider as a council, because that's beyond the, I think, the scope of what the public hearing was on, but I'm not sure on that, just sort of my initial thought. Counselor Lavoie, Counselor Sawyer?
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this. Clearly, you've done a much better job than I when I introduced it. But I'd like to see this come out tonight and go up to the floor on the 15th. When it's on the floor, it'll be, what, five months? So I think that's enough time, and if people support it or they don't, that's fine, but I just don't want to kick the can down the road and then come back to the same thing months from now. I don't think it's too drastic of a change that we need to give them time to phase it out or anything like that. They deal with it in other cities, and, you know, our contractor, I'm sure, services other cities that already ban it, and they're familiar with what they're gonna do. I don't think there's gonna be any difference, you know, maybe a cost impact, but I don't think if we give the city five or six months, that they're gonna come back and give us some, you know, renowned discovery that we're not already expecting here. They might not let it out of the gate, I understand that, but I think at the end of the day, protecting wildlife is more important than, you know, giving some window of time for them to figure it out. You know, I think we hire professionals, they know what they're doing, and I think it's time to just move it to the floor and see what happens. And before I close, sorry, the only thing, I wasn't the biggest fan of was the waiver. I would have liked to see a little more, like a vote on that, whether, be it by the council or somebody to that extent, given my pushback from the health department, I don't know how it'll, you know, I don't know the determination on what the oversight there will be, and if this is gonna be something where we're just given, because we've given waivers to every city building and park within our possession, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up that point about the emergency waivers. So actually, that was not a concept that I had thought of originally when I was drafting this. As you had shared previously, there's, you know, several municipalities that have moved in this direction, Lowell being one of them most recently, which you brought to my attention. Lowell actually included an emergency waiver section, which actually was much more broad than this, so I thought it needed to be much more specific if a waiver was to be granted, that there'd be, you know, a defined set of elements that made up the rules for approving waivers by the health department. So I think this actually is a little bit tighter than what Lowell did, and I, because of the comments that I had mentioned previously about, you know, potential infestation risks, you know, look at, you know, cities like New Bedford and what they've been dealing with recently, I thought that it was probably important to include something like this. I'm glad you brought it up for, but yeah, anyway, that was sort of the rationale with that piece, but I understand your position. Sorry, Counselor Sawyer, and then I think I saw Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Kovaas.
I think that it's never too soon to ban these to protect the wildlife that eat these rodents, and that's how we would usually take care of the rodents, is the wildlife who eat them. So I think it's never too soon to ban these rodenticides. That's really all my comments, and I understand all the waivers that you're talking about, and I think that they should be stricter, but thank you.
And just to be clear, too, the ban is not the only thing that accomplishes this, right? If the, and I don't know, I've not had conversations with the administration, but just for sake of argument, if the administration counts on, I'm making presumptions here, that we ought to move in the direction of not using these ESKRs, then I think the result is the same. I don't think anybody wants to see these be used as a go-to as a matter of pest control. I mean, I certainly don't, so I share the same position. I think it's just a matter of when we get there and perhaps timing, so I also want to be clear about that, too. I don't think that banning them is the only solution to save wildlife or to manage all of the unintended consequences of using the ESKRs as well, so. Counselor Dolan, Counselor Kovaas?
Thank you. I agree with almost everything that you've said. My concern is the zoo, because, you know, with all the feed that they deal with and everything, and what I would like to see is an effective date, not upon passage, but giving the administration a little time to do this. And I also, and I think the waiver should stay, because rodents can pose a significant health risk to humans, and I think our health department is, I think they're against scars. I would assume that this isn't the route they want to take if they don't have to, so I don't feel like they would be, you know, handing them out like we never did anything, like we're just gonna just keep status quo. So I trust them to know better than to just do that. Again, these rodents can cause a significant health risk to humans, children, and I don't think that, I think if we were to pass this, you know, the waivers and such wouldn't be their go-to. So I will support this. I'd like to see an effective date, like a couple months out. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
And just to be fair, too, I did talk to the health department, and actually, they had no idea whether ESKRs were used on city property or not, which I thought was interesting. But after doing a little bit more digging, neither did the recreational department, who uses a pest control contractor that's hired by the city, or Parks and Forestry. So that was research that we did need to do and have a conversation with the contractor that the city hires. So, yeah, I mean, even engaging the administration, I think part of that would be educational in nature, too, because I think there probably wasn't a lot of knowledge about what we were doing as a city. But, I mean, to a certain extent, I understand, right? You trust the professionals to use, you know, whatever effective means to, you know, handle whatever issues you're hiring them to deal with, so. But that was my only additional comment there, but thank you. Counselor Kovaas?
Thank you. I'm supportive of voting this out. One question, do you need a second on the amendment, and do we want to vote on this amendment?
Yes.
I'm happy to second that, and I like the amendment.
Yeah, you did second the amendment, and yeah, I would be happy to vote this out. I think on the floor, I wouldn't support it, but yeah, I would be in favor of voting it out of committee so that we can get this in front of the council the next full council meeting, and if there's any amendments we then want to make at that point, happy to visit those at that point as well.
The amendment meaning adding in the changes for the waivers, because I believe that wasn't originally there, correct? Was that part of the original?
So that whole Section 3.5 is not currently in the ordinance. Everything else, I'm sorry, that and 3.1 definitions is not, but the substance of the other provisions are, so.
Okay. So what I was asking is, did you want a second in for making that amendment to this?
Yeah.
To vote on, like, whether or not to add that into what we voted out of our committee?
Yeah, so you seconded the amended amendment, right, so that we could have this discussion? So, yes, so procedurally, yes, if we wanted to do this today, vote out the amended, the amendment as amended, and then the amendment. So part of the reason I did this was because the substance of the policy was in the proposed amendment, but not the actual amendment change, right? So that's why I wrote up the language, so that we could have a discussion regarding this and actually go forward.
And I especially like having the waivers in here. I think that makes it a lot more palatable for me to, in general. One of the things that I potentially would have liked and could maybe change later, regardless of the ESKRs, is I didn't realize that there was only a $25 fee for, like, a property owner that allows their property to be infested, and I think that fee should be much higher to give the health department sort of a tool to be able to, to sort of enforce sort of the health issues and policies. But that's something we, that's sort of another issue that we could maybe introduce to business later on, that I think is separate from the ESKRs discussion. But I'm supportive of voting this out, and especially with the waiver, I think it makes it a lot more palatable, and I applaud your work to add that in here.
Counselor Phil?
I was gonna raise the issue of the $25 offense fee. I think as long as we're changing this, let's do it all at once. I think it's a mistake to make the first offense $25. I'd like to see it be $100 or $200. Let's, if we're going to pass this, let's, or adopt this, let's put some teeth into it. $25, $50, $70, offend four times, it's $100, that's just not enough in my judgment. But what you said surprises me a little. We don't know what we're doing. It seems to me that rather than vote this out now, we should take the few weeks between now and the next appropriate meeting to find out what we're doing. Are we even using ESKRs? I don't know. You don't know.
Yes, we are.
We are.
Okay, you all know, but the people in charge of answering Counsel Javars' questions didn't know. I think we need to know that.
They didn't know as of a couple weeks ago, so they know now, so that was sort of the shift. But no, you're right. Originally, that was not something they were aware of, so as I was asking questions, no one really had the answers for me until we went to the contractor, so.
But now you do know.
Yes.
The city is using this.
Yes, yes.
And do you know where?
I mean, there's various places where it could be implied, so I don't know specific city property, but I'm not sure if that's as relevant, but, yeah.
I think Counselor Dolan's proposed suggestion that the effective date be three months or six months from now to give particularly the zoo an opportunity to comply is a good proposal, but I also would object to bringing it out now without modifying the offense fees.
Counselor Kovaas and Counselor Lavoie?
I'm good.
Okay. Counselor Lavoie and Counselor Sawyer?
Thank you. I'm concerned about the mechanism of the oversight. Either way, fine, leaving it. I do think it's a good addition, because I do think there is time and place when we can have a broader, sorry, more narrow scope and a more, you know, in-depth look on it. The only thing I'm, I guess, confused on is the whole point of giving the city time to phase it out. They're not handling this themselves, they hire a contractor. The contractor has told you, has told I, anyone else, has reached out. They know what they would do otherwise, it might be more expensive, but they handle it without using these, they'll just change their tools up that they use. So three months, five months, it's not gonna make a difference if, when you call said contractor tomorrow and say, hey, you can't use them, they're gonna say, okay, we'll do X, Y, and Z. So I think if the city was more, you know, in line with what we're doing and making shifts and changes, and hey, this property gets A, B, C, and this property gets X, Y, and Z, perfect, that makes sense of why we need three months, but we're, none of the departments knew what we were doing, had any oversight. I think we're relying on the contractor, which is fine, they'll be ready to go whenever we do it. I don't mind putting an effective date just for a clarification point, but I think three to six months, it seems excessive. It's been here for five months, so if the city needed five months, they already got it. So, I mean, they reached out immediately when I put this new business in, they knew it came in right away. The only thing was they were surprised, because I guess there was a disconnect when I called and I asked... there was a disconnect when I called and I asked if we used them. They told me, nope. And I said, uh, we don't know. And I said, oh, can I know what contractor is doing it? They said, yeah, no, we don't know what contractor is doing it either. And I was surprised calling that department. I'm like, so you don't know the contractor or what they're using? And they said, nope, but you can try to figure it out. Have a good day. That was how my call went. Now, I, I didn't tell you where I was, of course, I just called. But then I just closed the phone and said, okay, I'll, I'll write the piece of business up then. And then I got an email saying, hey, well, you didn't check with us. I did. Uh, I got a pretty stern response. So then I just moved forward as planned. So. Again, I, I just, not to keep going on, I just don't understand the whole point of waiting. The professional company hire doesn't need five months, three months, twelve months. They're ready to go as soon as we do this. They do it everywhere else. Overnight, they're ready to go. So, um, but again, happy with the waiver part. If we want to put an effective date just to make it look good, fine by me. I think it's not a bad idea just to have it on paper. But I don't see the point. I don't think it's warranted to give the city any kind of time to roll this out. Um, and then again, I would raise the point that we can amend this on the fifteenth, that there's fine amendments we want to make, but pushing it out two more months now just to make a amendment on a fine amount doesn't seem right to me. And that goes in the comments.
So just, uh, just a couple of additional thoughts for, for me on that. So two different issues that I see there, and maybe I didn't articulate these distinctly, is, is one is the administration. So while I can appreciate, based on, you know, that experience, you know, potentially frustration there, um, I, I do think without at least formally engaging the administration, we're sort of forcing their hand, um, without giving them an opportunity to, um, to, to weigh in on, on the direction that they see fit. Um, and I think at that point then, you know, if those, those two viewpoints sort of diverge, then, you know, we sort of act as a policymaking body, which that's what we're here to do. Um, so I, I think I would, I would like to, um, to explore that, but that, that's just my opinion. And then the second is, well, there's, there's several alternatives that I, I think we could use in, in talking with the city's contractor. I think, um, that's also another discussion as well. Some are more effective than others. And so when I say sort of giving some runway to sort of experiment with that, it's, it's more of, well, what's, what's gonna be the next best solution to address these issues that are not gonna create some other bigger issue? Uh, if we start switching, um, the way that we handle pest control and using other methods rather than escars and, um, and so that, that was more the rationale on that end, but I, I understand and appreciate all the points that you've raised. Um, Counselor Sawyer and then, oh yeah, Counselor Reynolds and Counselor Phil?
Um, so I wanted to just clarify that the, um, the ban that we are looking at with this, um, ordinance, um, change is for the city using it on city property. Is that right? So some of these, um, pieces of this amendment look like it's, um, going, talking to residents, like feeding of animals and also the fines. And so I wondered, um, if that was, if we're looking also to be pushing that to banning it, um, citywide for everybody to use? Or is this just for, um, city departments not using it on city property?
Yeah, we only have authority to ban it on city property, which is why it's, it's so narrowly construed in three point five. But all of the other sections, which are sort of like, I'll call them legacy sections in the existing, um, section seven, those I, I did not touch substantively and they just are, are broader in nature. Yeah.
So this is already sort of written with these things in it, having to do with, um, um, rodent control?
Three point one and three point five are the only new sections being added here. Everything's sort of been re, um, renumbered and reformatted.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor Reynolds?
So I, I was gonna ask that same question. In fact, I had just asked Laura about it. You know, this doesn't include homeowners, right? Of which we have many. And quite frankly, um, South Attleboro had a terrible problem during, um, COVID. Still has a pretty bad problem, but at least the restaurants are up and running. So, you know, they're running back, thank God to the restaurants. But there wasn't, um, one resident that wasn't calling me on any street that didn't have a rat problem. And they were using poison, quite frankly. And the city asked them not to. And they just pretty much laughed at it, which to be honest, I don't blame them, you know? I have yet to read anywhere, any city that has gotten rid of the rat problem without using it. They're gassing them, they're dry icing them, and they're still coming back. So I know that the, uh, the gentleman came down here that works for the, um, group that is Flynn, that, that is working with the city, great people, been around in business a really long time. And he tried to explain, it's never gonna be better. Nothing they use is going to be better. And you're gonna have all these other residents that are gonna continue to use what they want to use unless somehow worldwide it gets banned. So I, I don't, I don't see the need for the immediacy unless we can get the city to tell us what the pro- just like we're talking about, you know, a long-range print, plan for this or a long-range planning for that. We're gonna just jump in and do this and there's no, no thought to how is it working and what are we trying first? And then when that doesn't work, what are we doing if the, if, I mean, you're talking about not using something at the zoo. When kids are always at the zoo, people bring their animals into the park. And, and all of a sudden now we're gonna use some kind of control that is not as strong as the escars. So there needs to be a plan because we do have animals, parks, feed all over the place. So I'm ju- I'm, I'm with Jonathan at that, that there needs to be a more thought-out plan because I, I read about this all the time, especially since it, it happened in South Attleboro on such a large level and in North Attleboro where I know lots of people. And, uh, no one seems to get rid of them without anything, uh, other than nastiness. So whether, uh, and again, it doesn't even have to be the escars. It can just be the dry icing, gassing. Nothing's nice about a rat running around in your house or seeing a trail of them run by your backyard across your fence line, which people still are calling about. I need help getting rid of these. So the only thing that, that the health department will do, will ask you if the neighbor or where you see them, if someone has got a pile of leaves or they're collecting garbage or what are they doing? And they can't make those people, the health department can come down and find them. They can't really make them remove. I, I still see people continuously piling up their leaves, which is exactly where, um, rats habitate. So I don't know what the answer is, but I'm still suggesting that it's a good idea to have some kind of a plan and, and how we're gonna go about doing it, especially when we have all these residents that quite frankly are not gonna be following suit. And that, those are my comments.
Counselor Phil?
I had a question. Does rodents include anything beyond mice and rats? Are we talking about chipmunks?
They are a rodent.
I understand that. That's why I'm asking.
How do you separate them if you put it out?
Well, you can say mice and rats for one thing.
I don't think you can.
I, I would venture to say that the, that the goal is, is mice and rats, as you mentioned, but rodents is a more inclusive term. That would include more than just mice and rats, I would assume. I don't know the dictionary definition of, uh, of a rodent, but.
Well, I, I, I see, I don't see any reason to use broader language than is necessary. So I, I would propose that we, uh, consider being explicit, talking about mice and rats. I also think that Counselor Angelo's, uh, suggestion that we, uh, eliminate the use of glue traps if we have been using them in the city is a good one.
Can't ignore this. Did you call me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Um, so a couple of questions. So as far as the, of all the scars, um, so I feel like maybe we could address that at a different point, which would be completely fine. Second question, did the solicitor review this?
No.
Okay. And, um, did we, and did you talk to, you talked to department heads about this?
Yes.
And so this, the department heads you spoke to were at, submitted?
The health agent, I talked to, um.
You spoke to after it was submitted?
Yes, yes.
After it was submitted. Um, and as far as the rodent thing, I mean, regardless of, I think in my head, however we word it, if we use the scars or whatever the case is, we're, we're not differentiating what it's killing, you know?
That's right.
It's not like, no chipmunks, you know what I mean? Like it's gonna, whatever eats it is going to not be with us anymore. So I think whether it be a squirrel or a chipmunk, which, you know, they're all adorable, but I don't know how we could, I don't know how we could differentiate a rodent, like potato, potato.
They are rodents.
Or, or anything like that. So, thank you.
I, I just think, um, we have an opportunity, since we are looking at this provision as a whole, to clarify our intentions. So, uh, we're talking about homeowners and what they do. I don't think the issue about rodents really addresses, is one that the city should be worried about, but homeowners might be. You don't wanna fine homeowners who are, um, killing chipmunks and squirrels.
But we're not fining them for killing them. We're fine, oh, do you mind? I'm sorry. Can I respond? Um, we're not fining, we're fining them for the other things, for, um, it has nothing to do, the, anything in here with, um, residents has nothing to do with what we're adding to this section of the ordinance is.
Understood.
Okay. And to be fair, the original language, so there were a couple of changes. This was one of them where it specifically said rats. And I did suggest rodents. So to your, to your point, I, I think it's, it's something to consider, right? But we're also talking about more than rats. I mean, so do we say rats and mice, right? Um, and are there any other potential rodents that we might want to include and others that we exclude? Like, so I, I think you do run into that issue as well. Counselor Lavoy?
Thank you. So just to be clear, the rodent part comes from the actual name, rodenticides. That's the whole point of what's introduced. So. I, I don't, I, I agree with Counselor Dolan. I'm not, sorry, Vice President Dolan, I'm not sure on the differentiation. I don't know. I mean, again, it's a rodenticide. That is what this drug is. That's where the targeted name of rodent comes in. Uh, I mean, if there's a chipmunk issue on a park and they wanna handle them with certain toxins, chemicals, gases, you name it, as long as it's not this, that's kind of the stuff of this. So I don't think we should be kind of targeting if it's gonna be, you know, a rabbit or a chipmunk or that, we could be here for seventeen years trying to figure out what is a rodent and what isn't a rodent in Attleboro. Um, so I think keeping to the true language, where, I mean, you, you defined it, si- seven dash three point one subsection N. I mean, you, you've defined, for the most part, it's kind of, it's more why we're here. So. I, I think we're getting like really far into some side conversations on something that should be kind of cut and dry on if you're in favor of it or you're not.
So here's what I would like to do, um, if, if you're in favor of this, Counselor Cobus, I think we lost our third committee member. But, um, between, um, you and I here, I, I am fine voting this out of committee so that we can get this in front of the whole council. And there's certainly been some, I think, some fair points about, uh, a couple of potential, uh, amendments. I'm not inclined to address those at this time. Um, and in particular, um, as it relates to the fines, I, I believe you made this point too, Counselor Cobus and Counselor Dolan, about, um, yeah, the, the, the public hearing wasn't necessarily, um, addressing the, uh, the fines, right? These were, and I intentionally didn't touch the fines. These were the fines that were originally in here since I think the last time this section was amended was in nineteen ninety-six, if I remember correctly. So, um, and address that through another process, um, or perhaps an amendment if that's, if that's appropriate. But, um, I think we vote this out of committee and then address it in the full council and, and go from there.
I, I think that makes sense. And, and I agree. I don't think it's appropriate for us to change the fee now without having another public hearing. Um, I think we can do that in the future if someone wants to propose new business to, to change those fees.
Counselor Dolan?
Would it be, so we have like three weeks before we're back here and, and I, and I'm not trying to hold this up and I have no problem with you guys moving on. Do you think that we'd have enough time for the, I mean, it's pretty small for the solicitor to review it?
Yes, good point. Actually, I, I failed to mention that. Yes. So, um, I intentionally did not put this in front of the solicitor beforehand. I did not want to waste his time, depending on how this conversation went. Um, but if we do pass this in committee, um, yes. Uh, in terms of the substance that's here, I, I would plan on definitely having him run through this language so that way we, um, if, if he's got any additional input before our, um, our next full council meeting, we can address that too. So we can sort of walk and chew gum at the same time.
Can I just think one moment?
Yep, sure.
I mean, I'm just, the only concern I have is I wonder if he will feel, like, I don't know. I mean, I feel like it belongs here, but we, I, I feel like it, it, cause it's confusing. It was confusing to some people that's sitting here right now regarding fines, but those fines apply to the other portions of this. So I don't know if it should be in a different section, and I'm sure he would suggest that if it's, you know, cause you have the definitions, which is great. And then the, all the, all the other stuff, like the infestation pro- prohibited is all, you know, for businesses and, um, but we're not fining the city, you know what I mean? So that goes to residents. So I wonder if might, he might suggest maybe making it separate, you know? But I, I'd feel better if he reviewed it.
A hundred percent.
And I agree with you, not running it by him, you know, prematurely until you've got a vibe on how everybody's feeling about it. So I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, um, so we'll vote on the amendment as amended. Okay. So, and I think it's just you and I. I think Counselor, um, almost dropped off. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Um, now we will vote on the original amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I should have said that the first time as well. Okay. That concludes the business of ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. Move to adjourn at eight forty.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.